Do you have another question?
One hour.
discussion. For the approval. Our discussions.
Hearing none, I'd like to get a motion for the adoption of the agenda.
Second.
Discussion. All of them favor. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Hi Scott.
Sorry, I'm late.
You're good. Okay, uh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Several retro things. There's been a lot that's happened in the last few weeks here as we wound down the summer. First of all, we had all of our staff members back at LVHS yesterday for our back to school staff assembly. It was great to see everybody, a lot of positive energy. Took staff photos individually and then a big room photo, which will be going up on the website. I said a few words and then we had a guest speaker named Christina Kuzmic, who you may have read about on County 10. You can see some of her stuff online. That was a great dynamic, well-known speech by her. And she did an air session last night as well, but. Very good to have the staff. In fact, it's always a little bit weird in the central office when there aren't people in schools and there aren't students. So this feels more like the real world. People start coming back. Along with that, I wanted to just welcome our new certified staff. We have a few teachers I want to mention. I'll just go by school again. Pete Colby Carr is a kindergarten teacher for us. Rachel Kemner and Hannah Labuda will both be special education teachers. Kelly Spurlock will be doing academic intervention. And Gabby Vincent will be doing speech language pathology. At Baldwin Creek, we have Marco on Austin Fiazizi. Did I say that right, Bonnie?
Yeah.
Alright, um, fourth grade teacher coming to us from Riverdale. Very excited to have them. At Lander Middle School, Betsy Belkin will do special education. Baby Case will be our new computer science teacher. Carrie Goodclerk will do special education. Courtney Derby's got seventh grade science. Emily Nash will be doing family, uh, super science. Molly Olson will be the art teacher. So those are the new LMS certified folks. And then a handful at Lander Valley High School, Wade Anderson, Bekeeping Auto. Megan Boyson is our new ELA teacher, English Language Arts. Michael Nelson will be teaching art, also a Pathfinder. And. Michael Nelson, if you see a really sweet mid seventies baby blue Cadillac in town, that's Michael Nelson. Immediately recognizable car, nice land yacht. Robert Parker will be teaching band. Gennara Seeley will be teaching special education at Eric Watson. That's our new art teacher. So. That's our new certified folks. They're all. Super excited and the enthusiasm is kind of off the charts. We do our initial contract teacher training that started last week. Great participation and engagement. Most folks are really excited to have them. And last but not least, our two new administrators. Nathan Butler is here in the back row. Our new assistant principal again, Peak Elementary. And then Matt George, our activities director. Is also new in the district. I don't see him. Hopefully he's. Doing a two a day practice or helping a coach somewhere. Those activities started up for the most part yesterday, so. Welcome to all of those folks. Next, the WDE did a couple of professional development events. The first part of August here, one was called Teacher Con. And that was on August 4th in Laramie. We had great representation as a school district at that. At that conference and among those that were formally recognized by the state for different things. I'll just shout out a few of them here. Richard Adnett. LVHS science teacher was recognized as a finalist for the Presidential Award for Excellence in Math Science Teaching. Morgan Hahn, of course, our 2025 Wyoming Teacher of the Year. From LVHS, also a social studies teacher there. Rachel Peters, also LVHS math. She was a winner of the same award that Richard Adnett is a finalist for, but in a previous cohort. So she was. One of the national winners coming from Lander Valley. Stephanie Ryan, our N P kindergarten teacher. She received the first WDE Rising Star Educator Award. Which is for an early career teacher in their first five years. She was nominated by the school and won that over all the other competition in the state, which is really exciting. There's a nice picture on County 10 if you happen to see that article. And then Lander Valley High School, of course, was recognized previously for the 2025 School of Excellence, as a School of Excellence. And they got a special recognition at Teacher Con for that as well. So. Congratulations to all those individuals and to those schools that they represent. Very exciting to see that at the state level. A couple of folks mentioned it was just kind of embarrassing how often they kept saying Fremont one from the state. Chase Fremont one again. It's like. When Schindler's List or something like that is up in academia or just kind of sweeping. So it's kind of exciting. On the heels of the Teacher Con Conference, the 307 Principal Leadership Academy also took place. In Laramie. And several people from our district there were represented and honored at that function. Johnny Gordon is the Assistant Principal of the Year for the State of Wyoming, as you guys know. But two of our administrators were presenters and are also serving as principal mentors for that group. Deidre Meyer. Did some sessions at the conference and Brad Newendorf as well, his mentor, and did a couple of different sessions at that conference. So. Great to see that, that leadership and that initiative. And that recognition at the state level for our folks. You know, amazing people here. These are just a few of them. I wanted to shout them out as we're getting going on the new school year. Finally, we have a guest in the audience here. Dallas Myers is the Education Director for Wyoming Agriculture and the Classroom. And he's got a special presentation that he wants to make.
Well, good evening, community members. Mr. Chairman. Board members. You've been in there. Thank you for giving us a few minutes. My name is Dallas Myers. I serve as the Director, the Wyoming Agriculture and the Classroom. Along with me tonight is Sarah Ridge, our Director of the Classroom. Philanthropie. It is our honor. Please say your applause to me. It is our honor, Wyoming Agriculture and the Classroom, to recognize Neil Wong. As the 2025 Wyoming Agriculture and the Classroom Educator of the Year. Neil has gone above and beyond in bringing. Stewardship to life for all of his students. His creativity, passion, and commitment ensure that students not only learn about Wyoming's heritage industries. Outdoor recreation, tourism, hospitality, natural resources, and agriculture, but he also. Sees his role in shaping the future of our state for our students. On behalf of Wyoming Agriculture and the Classroom. We are proud to present Neil with this award along with a check for $2,500. In recognition of his outstanding dedication and impact. Please join me in congratulating Neil Wong as an educator who truly makes a difference for students. I think you give one number to.
Yes. Your son's hitting you pretty heavy there, Daryl.
Turn, turn this way. Where your shadow. We want to be able to see that pretty face.
There's nobody. Won't be a come up. I don't know why. They're rolling the picture. They ain't got the same haircut.
Yeah, two baldies in the center. Different kind of baldies than.
Thank you. Congratulations, Neil Wong. As a senior ranger.
Thank you. And if we could, how about another round of applause on all of the wonderful folks that Mr. Harris honored tonight. I think it just sure shows what a great district we have. You have anything else, Mr. Harris?
I'll have plenty more next month, but.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, so a public comment. Is there any public comment on items that are not part of the agenda tonight? Not part?
Yeah.
Okay. You might want to state your name and.
So I guess like part of this sort of like. A change of department. It's not really part. So Sarah Riley, first thing. Is I wanted to say thank you all so much for bringing Christina Kuzmic to town. Like she's been my idol for the last decade and I'm just like. Jumping out of my skin. She was incredible. So thank you for that. Huge asset to the community to be able to see and hear the things that she has to say, especially since mental health is. A top priority right now. And then the second thing I wanted to say, which is adjacent to, but not actually related to. The agenda was that I owe an apology to this board and this community for a misunderstanding. Of the way things were presented with the new rule versus policy for CKA and. The language that was used wasn't very clear. And instead of coming to clarify it. Which I should have done first. I did not. And it. Kind of created a little bit of kerfuffle for people in not understanding what was happening. And I wanted to just sort of take ownership of that mistake. And thank you guys three were patient and understanding. It is never my intent to be a foreign inside of this board or this district, especially. By doing things that are. Actually incorrect. So I just wanted to say. Deepest apologies for any trouble that that caused. And thank you all for your graciousness and understanding. When that happens. So that's all. Thank you.
Okay, any other public comment for things that are not on the agenda? Is there any public comment tonight on an item that isn't? Okay. Hearing none, we can move on. Board member reports.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'll chime in with just a. Point of interest. Turns out Zoom doesn't allow you to connect to this meeting from out of the country. So. Took me a minute to get a VPN set up so I could convince that I was in Miami rather than where I'm at. So. But I'm glad I could join. Thank you.
Well, the. Your background makes me really curious. Incognito for sure.
So.
Thanks for joining us, Scott. Mark?
I just wanted to share, I joined a few days of the high school orientation for students who went rock climbing as part of their orientation and. Was just so inspired by. What we call it apathetic, trying to not be cool enthusiasm. But you could see the enthusiasm. And was really struck by, I asked them all what they were most nervous about for. Starting high school. And almost every single one said their grades, which. I think is telling of their priorities and. Really cool that they're nervous about doing well in school and not. All the other things that. Can be scary.
Great. Thanks, Mark. Others? Just a couple of quick things. First. I assume it's Matt that was primarily responsible. No?
No, it was not. That was Edward Barnes, our project coordinator. It was all him.
Well, to Mr. Barnes, I sure would like to issue a. Deep felt appreciation for bringing Christina on. That was an amazing event. I was able to attend and. She should tug at a bunch of heartstrings in that audience, I can tell you that.
We were.
Interacted with the attendance as well. Absolutely. The other thing that I need to bring to the board's attention, I did email, send this email. I didn't get it till. I didn't send it until today anyway. And that is that we have on September. With each Thursday afternoon. From September 18th through October 9th, we have a free. One hour virtual workshop that we're. Able to attend. Followed by an in-person workshop at the Hilton Garden Inn CAF from October 18th, which is a Saturday. From 10 a.m. to 3. Purpose of this series is to provide participants with the knowledge and skills to talk with legislators ahead of the recalibration process. So that might be an interesting one for anyone on the board that wants to go to attend. The, the board does have funds for travel expenses for those kinds of things. So I would encourage anyone that wants to do that to do so. Let's go ahead and if you're interested, please send. Jenny, your, your interest and she can make sure to get to pay for these. For both the virtual deals as well as the in-person. And then she can help us arrange the travel. If we could maybe get that done within the next week or so. That'd be great.
Mr. Chair, I guess that would be a good segue. Just wanted to share an open invitation and I'll remind everybody in our September meeting. But on the 16th of, hold on, I know the. The wrong, sorry guys. The 17th of September. Um, no. Sorry, the 18th of September, the State Board of Education is going to be meeting and we're here in Lander. And so if anybody would like to come and listen to that and. To, like I said, to segue off that, Jared. I'm on the legislative committee and the chair of that. And we really have been discussing this summer and during our retreat. The need for the state board to be more involved with our legislators because obviously their policy decision-making affects, as we've seen through some recent legislation. Everybody in the state. So that's would be a good time if there's any concerns that our board has or things like that, just working together to. Have those meetings with them before recalibration and.
And next meeting you'll give.
Yes, so we meet the Tuesday before and then the, the state board will be that Thursday. So I'll send a reminder and I'll have a little bit better information on our agenda.
Okay, cool. Thanks. Mike and I were talking a little bit offline about how we could. Become more engaged with our legislators here and maybe inviting them to a meeting to. Present what's going on at the stage or, you know, something along those lines. It might not be that. That thing to do. So we'll work on that over there. Any other reports? Dagan. Thank you for being here. I hope your summer has been awesome. What's going on?
Uh, nothing much, Mr. Chair. Um. Well, sports started yesterday, but there's been so much stuff happening over the summer. Our football boys have been out there every day. Volleyball's been practicing every day. Basketball practice for a while. Swimming's been practicing every day. So there's been a lot of work being put in over the summer and hopefully it all culminates to be something really awesome this fall sports season. And then obviously school is starting Tuesday. And with that, our student council is working really hard to launch an Instagram. We had it last year. But it wasn't quite what we wanted. So this year we're working really hard to really connect with our students and boost school spirit and. Our goal would ultimately be to have the biggest student section in Wyoming and be the loudest one. So hopefully we can get there. And then. Musical auditions are on Tuesday as well for Safe School. We've been doing all of her. But yeah, lots of stuff happening. Excited for the new year to start. Thank you.
Very cool. Thank you. Any questions for Dana? Alright. Mr. Harris, super technical.
Mr. Chair, thank you. I was just going to rag from it on Dagan. I'm not sure if you guys are all aware. She's not only the representative to the board, she's also this year's student council president. She's also this year's National Honor Society president. Among all the other things that she does for her as a particular. So. I just wanted to say kudos to her. And when you're hearing representation for her, you're hearing her from lots of different groups and activities because she's in about all of them, D D most of them. So.
I'd like to.
For your service to the school.
I'd love to say I'm surprised. Alright, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, of course, we're barreling ahead toward the start of the 25-26 school year. There's a lot of stuff going on. Wanted to provide you with a brief. Glimpse into what's going on with our enrollment. I know that's been a major question and what's going to happen. For a lot of different reasons, but our enrollment as of this afternoon, when I checked a couple, like two hours ago. We were at 1,510 students. So slowly approaching last year's total, but it's likely that we may be a little bit less than where we were last year. Still, it's looking a lot better than it did earlier in the summer and even earlier this month. A lot of late registrations coming in. Just a word about, you know. Students with I E Ps or students that have special education needs. That number is holding pretty steady. We have 263 students with I E Ps. So despite the overall decrease in enrollment, we are still maintaining a pretty decent sized number of students with I E Ps. So just, just a note there. Grade level enrollment is very widely. And just an example of this, at Anne Peak alone. In the kindergarten class, we have 79 students registered, which is abnormally low. And in the grade level right above that, first grade, we got 124 students. So almost a 50% increase from one grade level to the next. It makes it very difficult. For a lot of different things, planning and staffing, food service, supervision on the playground, all that kind of stuff is. A little more difficult. You got these, these variances from grade levels to grade levels. So.
Cool. Just to hold a bunch of those back. It can back the kinder.
I don't know. Some of them might be moving up. I don't know. It'll be interesting to see where we end up. We are seeing several parents came in today to register children at the kiosk that we have here at the district office. A lot are doing it from home. Other places. So. They're coming in and we'll see where we're at. But yeah, so far it's looking like not as precipitous of a drop as we might have thought.
Good to hear.
Related to that, on funding, of course, the general fund is tied closely to our average daily membership, but federal funds. Are related to that, but also like numbers of students with poverty, community poverty threshold, things like that. Last month, as late as our, our break with the meeting last month, we didn't know what was going on with our federal funds, whether they're going to have those funds or if they're going to be. Significantly cut. And with my federal ones, that funds, I'm thinking about like 21st century. Community learning centers, Title I, Title II, Title IV, those different federal funds that we. Really rely upon in the district. We learned on July 23rd that our federal funds for lights on. Would be released. So the total awards, there's three different types of grants. So they combined for the total year award. $464,141 that we were looking at maybe not getting or beginning to know. So we were fully funded for that, which is awesome. Both that funds our after-school program. And our summer lights on program. And then on the 25th of July, we received word from the state that our federal funds would be awarded in our other title areas, which is a huge relief. Our Title I allocation is almost $656,000. So that funds all are part of nine positions in the school district of additional professional development and resources. And materials. Title II A, that allocation is $175,137. It's a change. That funds part of six positions, including all of our instructional facilitators. And then our Title IV allocation. Came to $112,771 roughly. And that funds part of two different positions. So as you can imagine, if we hadn't gotten those funds. We would be looking into other options to fund those positions. Those are the, a lot of those are certified. The majority are certified positions. So their spokes are under contract. And speaking with Chairman Kale, we knew we were going to honor those contracts. But with this federal funding now, we don't have to dip into reserves or do something more drastic, which is really a relief. So we're proceeding as normal. After some stressful months there in the summer, the allocations came significantly later than what we normally expect. But we're in good shape and that crisis is averted this year.
Right. I can't remember from our budget session, were those included in our budget numbers? I mean, were we anticipating those coming in?
Mr. Chair, those are our budget that was presented July as our general fund budget. There was some reference to federal. Numbers in there, I believe.
They're in, they are in there. Remember. Ask General Fund. Federal Funds. Yeah. Those are part of that. Okay. Thanks, Travis.
Mr. Chair, I have a question that I maybe should have asked during when you were voting on the consent agenda. So I apologize, but. I just have a question. Actually, Mr. Harris, I'm sorry. Were you finished? I don't think you were. Okay, I'm sorry about that. So my question with the recent legislation with homeschool reporting, that, that had changed, right? Where families now don't require to report. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, so we were advised to send out those letters asking parents to let us know if they're homeschooling. But there is no enforcement mechanism. If parents don't respond to those letters. You're not going to track down or.
Sure. I just ask because I see obviously that quite a few were sent and I'm wondering, you know, for time. For our staff, it seems like that's probably pretty. Time consuming to mail out those and send those letters and knowing that there's no enforcement of it. There's nothing really to track. It just was curious if we thought that's. Something and I didn't know if it was part of child find where we have, we are obligated legally to, you know, reach out to those families or. Or, you know, that's something that we should consider no longer doing.
Mister Chair, Mrs. Jacobs, yes, that is something that a lot of districts have been discussing and we talked about with our legal counsel. Because of child find is one of the main reasons we're gonna continue to send the letters. Um, but as far as like what we do if a student or a family doesn't respond, there is no enforcement mechanism. And there is no longer any reporting of curriculum, so they don't have to furnish anything to the school district.
So we'll no longer be voting on when Deidre applies, provides us that list. Okay, thank you. But I just wanted to clarify that.
Child, can you educate us a little bit?
Sure, Mister Chair. Yeah, child find just refers to the the process by which um school districts identify. Students who may be in special education services. So we're required to cast a broad net. And try to locate any student resides within our district boundaries if they may need special education services, whether they're homeschooled. Private school or enrolled in the school district, we have to try to identify those kids. So there's a lot of outreach involved.
Thank you. Uh, if you know anything else, I think the next thing on the agenda is executive session. So I need to get a motion to adjourn into executive session.
So moved.
There you go. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Bye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Hopefully this won't be too long, I'm worried.
Mister Chair, I'm gonna call you from a different number, so just answer it when you see it, I guess.
Out of country now.
Yes. All right, I'd like to bring the meeting back up to order. Can I get a motion to come out of executive session? Would you? Say again. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If you both, motion carries. All right, I need to get a motion of the personnel actions as presented.
So moved. Second.
Any discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, Mike, I'll have you present this one, but I need to get, or we need to, I need to get a motion to take for. Uh, the use of Fremont County Bosse's funds as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Mike, you wanna talk us through this whole one?
Sure, I can introduce it and just to see if you got additional details, feel free to chime in. But um our new ag teacher, Eric Watson, is interested in getting some fence materials and supplies to refence District's parcel. Um, at the end of Dillon Drive, he said Dillon Drive, they have sixty acres up there as for the site of a future school if we needed it. Uh, it's just pasture right now. Uh, the fence is down on two sides and the other two sides are kind of weak and just barely hanging on. So he wanted to get those materials and have students from the ag classes uh learn how to repair fence, repair that. Get it enclosed so that it can be used for other things down the road. Uh, here in the agenda, there's for the materials. Lander Valley was the lowest of the local bits. Um, so the total amount, if you all to, you all were to approve it, it'd be for four thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-six cents. Um, for those materials from Valley lumber.
And what's our uh current balance for the Bosse's funds roughly? Two hundred and fifty thousand is that over that?
Yes, Mister Chair, members of the board, it's it's close to a quarter of a million dollars. It's been accumulating for several years without any uh any use of the funds.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. And then is the U and Lamb project separate from that?
Mister Chair, yes, it's the same funding source, but it would be for a different project, also with L B H S Ag. So this is a partnership between the school district and C W C. Uh, we wanted to use some funds from Fremont County Bosse's account to purchase tenews. Um, we'd be inseminated through A I and then you'd have lambs and the ag students could use those to raise, learn about raising lambs. And then some of them would be used for show. Uh, so yeah, a couple of different things, trying to to get some hands-on experience for some of our kids who maybe don't have their own lifestyle.
For those not in ag, A I does not mean artificial intelligence, Mister Chair.
Right.
And even as a demonstration.
I think we've on the internet, one of what could have. All right, can I get a motion for approval of using Bosse's funds for the U and Lamb project?
So moved.
Say. Any discussion? I would just, uh, my only comment is I think this is fantastic. I mean, I think it's a wonderful, 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 high school to be in. I appreciate the uh the our teacher down there bringing this project to the forefront. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Your opposed? All right, motion carries. And now for my favorite time of the evening. I need to get a motion for the approval of a donation from Laura. For a grant of seventeen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars uh for the discuss area improvements.
So moved. Oh, I didn't know that.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you to Laura.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Indeed, thank you, Lauren. It's awesome. And also for Laura, I need to get a motion for approval of their donation for funds for project graduation. In this case, uh in the amount of five thousand dollars. So moved.
Mister Chair?
Yes.
Sorry, to clarify, is this from Laura?
I'm sorry, it's Land Rec. That's, I was looking at the wrong line item there. Thank you.
And I do have a question on this because um if you don't mind, not that I'm not gonna approve this. But um we were talking earlier when we were just having our discussions about the rec board. And so Mister Sweeney, this might be directed to you, but we talked about how the rec board had to be used for community projects. And so I'm just curious how, not that I don't want us to approve this and I think it's great. But project graduation seems like it's not necessarily a community project. It seems very specific to students at L B H S or Pathfinder. And so I'm just curious how we were able to swing that. Okay, and Eileen's not here, so I just thought that was part of their bylaws or or some sort of agreement. Because we talked about that with the pool that we'd only be able to subsidize what was public use versus the school district. And and so that just made me think when I saw this, I'm like, well, project graduation seems very specific to uh to Lander students. So I just was wondering if we had a thought on that.
Yeah, and thinking back many years when I was back on that board, this does seem like it's not part of the. Doesn't seem to meet the bylaws, because everything that we did with, you know, whether it was the Lotras. Cover on their, on their arena up there or the new bike paths out at Johnny Kind of Rocks or, you know, whatever it was. There always seemed to be a public usage.
Yeah, which again, I'm not trying to complain, I'm just curious, because it makes me wonder if we could tweak it differently, so just a thought.
Do we want to, because I don't want to get cross-slept with their bylaws. Do we want to wait on this one and have Eileen check into it a little bit more or be comfortable with?
Well, I feel like everyone's a real good check there. Different ones, I need to figure that out, I guess, maybe as a board, if there's questions later on and maybe, I don't know.
All right, I think we had a motion and second. Mike was, did you move it?
I did.
Make the motion. Move second.
I'll say it.
Okay, okay.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, and then we have, I need to get a motion for the approval of amendments for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budgets.
Oh, Mister Chair.
Yes.
I believe we have one more donation from Laura.
Did I just skip?
For education, yeah.
I don't see it. I've only got two.
Oh, there's no PDF. It says, consider donation grant from Laura Foundation, an amount of ten thousand dollars to fund expenses. Related to Lander Middle Schools Wind River Outdoor Education Trip, September eighth through twelfth.
Okay, great. Now I'm just looking just at the PDF, so.
Yeah, I apologize, the PDF for this item came in yesterday. That's why it wasn't attached at the published when this agenda was published.
Ma, thank you very much. Uh, can I get a motion as such? Second.
Okay.
All right. Uh, Mike, would you talk about this program just a little bit?
Sure, so I can, I'll tell you a little bit of general information and I'd invite Mister Horton and Mister Martin to chime in since they're helping organize this way more than I am. Um, so this is a chance for Niner Middle School sixth graders to do some place-based education. Up at the Whiskey Mountain Conservation Camp, which is run by, owned by the game fish. Uh, but they'll be going up in September for a couple of days and some some overnights uh to learn about a local um. Science, local science, those cultural studies, social studies, um a lot of different biology aspects. There's a whole lot of different curricular standards that we're gonna hit through the trip. And not to mention an awesome way to involve community members and hopefully build some camaraderie and some cohesion among the new sixth graders as they start middle school. So with some more detail, Mister Horton or Mister Martin could talk about the community partnerships and exactly what the activities will be.
Mister Chair, members of the board, uh super excited about Wind River Outdoor Ed. And appreciative of your support of the program. Um, it is a really cool collaboration of a lot of community members in and around Lander. Will be at a game of uh and fish site. The vast majority of the instructors are scientists from different organizations around town and around county. Um, Big Horn Chief Center is involved. Knowles is teaching a Leave No Trace class. Um, Laura's supporting financially. I believe Kiwanis is gonna be supporting financially. Um, but students will take acorn classes that are mainly science-related. Um, and draw from kind of the core of middle school science, so middle school science has a band of standards and um. So yeah, there will be acorn classes, a couple of water cycle classes, um couple of wildlife classes. There's pete plus up there, so there will be like a cultural historical class. Um, one of the water class, waterfall, the other water class is turning down the the um creeks of the lake. Um, Leave No Trace, leadership, team building sort of class. Um, archery, learning uh basic physics through archery. I think those are the core classes and then there will be, um, we think we don't all fit on campus at one time. So we'll split the sixth grade class in half. One group will go up Monday, Tuesday night, come down, another group will come up, say Wednesday, Thursday night. So they'll all get like two rounds of evening activities as well. I believe Dallas Myers is gonna be teaching supply fishing in the evenings. Um, our teacher's gonna come up and do a ranking of our project and um just other opportunities like that. So uh, so on school, uh it's definitely not like a camp or an extra curriculum or thing. It's science school, it's it's um teaching middle school science standards in a way that we can't replicate in the classroom. We've got the commitment from our whole sixth grade team, our whole science department and our whole K E department. So um, you got there with the group as well, along with myself and uh.
Awesome.
Any questions for the team? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Cool approach. Okay, so I need to get a motion for, and I guess the motion, appropriate motion would be be resolved that the general fund is. Instruction budget, one thousand program code for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year be amended to seventeen million, seven hundred and fifty thousand. And the food service budget, Fund Fifty-One, be amended to one million and eight thousand. That that motion?
I get a motion. All right, I make a motion to what Jared just said. I'll second that.
All right. Uh, Travis, any, any discussion on this? This all, Derek, no, I mean, this basically just a exercise that we have to do for a lot of. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Careless. All right, we're on to discussion items. Uh, first reading, we need to go over policy G C Q C, Mister Harris.
Thank you, Mister Chair. So G C Q C has to do with the resignation of professional staff. And the way the original policy or the current version of the policy reads is that a staff member, certified staff member resigns after. The contract period, so after May fifteenth, there are kind of graduated penalties, uh depending on the lateness of the resignation. And currently, what the policy states is that if you were in that first month after the contract period, it's the actual cost of the employee and employer. Portion of health benefits for one month, and then the second month, it's two months, and then after July fifteenth, it's three months. So the way the policies were written out, that penalty is tied to health insurance premiums, which is confusing. Because we have had in the past in school district of employees who look as I late, but weren't taking school district insurance, which made it kind of funny to link those two things together. This amended version, um talking with Mister Sweeney, talking with our board chair about this. The new version will base that penalty on a percentage of the employee's gross salary, so two percent for the first month after the contract period. Quarter percent for the second, and then after July fifteenth, six percent. Um, the other thing that does is it's sort of a graduated amount based on the uh length of time you've been in the district. And potentially the salary schedule for the position. If it's a higher paid position, there's a, there's a larger number because you're paid more and it doesn't rely on the uh the health insurance in any way to to set that rate. So we we thought about just making it to a dollar amount, um but that might require more frequent revisions. Uh, especially if it's related to the health insurance premium, so it's technically a B zero per year.
Discussion. Thoughts on this? Karen?
My, my own.
Friend.
You can have me.
We can.
Um, so I just had some questions, like, do we do our incentive? How many people do we generate? The incentive to that super.
Mister Chair, Miss Arms, I I don't recall off the top of my head. I think it's been pretty consistent your year. I think it's in the upper teens most years, which means during my dad's class, but.
I just, I I just have some concerns, um mainly like when people do resign lately, it's late, it's because of life events. And uh, not all life events happening with the school schedule a lot of times. And so I'm worried if us getting into this policy, we're gonna just spend a lot of time deciding which life events qualify. Or which life events we're gonna say you don't have to. You know what I mean? Like that we're gonna be just stuck manning this policy a lot. Rather than, I mean, I like our incentive. I think that gets a lot of people who know that they're, they have plans, they're already, already going to leave or retire or whatever. And our incentive gets the majority of those, and that's what we want because we want to be able to advertise early. We want to have the biggest pool. That's what we want. That's what our goal is. And so I just worry, what is our goal with this? And then if people stick around because of this, are they gonna be happy employees that we? So that's just some thoughts I have, but it just concerns.
That's true.
Other discussion on this topic?
Mr. Chair, just for the board's reference, there have been, the waiver stipulations remain intact under this version. And since this policy, this latest version was put in place. Um, in the fall of twenty three, the board said it considered three waiver requests. Awards granted two of those and, and denied one, so that's just a little bit of the history with the waivers.
Any other discussion? Any changes we need to make to this before we move to second reading? Alright, hearing none? Making these slow. Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. Uh, the next issue is policy CKA. Just to make, just to, to clear up any confusion. We, we have two, two competing items going on and they seem like they're competing because they're truly not. When the legislature passed HB one seventy two. Uh, what they require is that if we want to continue to train or, uh, to train our, our employees. Relative to concealed carry, we have to pass a rule. A rule is different than a policy, rule has different prom, prom, promulgation. Probably said that wrong, um. Procedures, the forty-five day waiting period, uh, after notification, blah, blah, blah. Uh, however, that said, we did pass the rule. And the rule is now in effect, uh, for the district. Which makes CKA redundant, everything in CKA that deals with training is covered in the rule. Everything that, everything else in CKA is no void because it would contradict what the legislature did. So, at this point, really what we're talking about is just. Like it getting rid of policy CKA in favor of that rule, is that, did I state all that correctly?
Mr. Chair, exactly, yeah, so the rule can stand alone, it doesn't need a supplemental policy. Confirm that with our, our district legal counsel, that the rule is sufficient, you don't have to have a supplemental policy. Uh, so all these other policies that were based on the previous state statute are no longer.
That, that clears button to everyone? Understand what's going on there?
Thanks for providing that clarification.
Any, any discussion on this?
Mr. Chair, so do we need to go through and, um, vote to delete each one of these or can we blanket that? Are we waiting till next meeting? It looks like it's under discussion, so we need to go through this twice as formality. Okay.
Yeah, this is, this is the first reading this meeting, so we'll still need to do this officially next meeting.
And then we could, during that, it doesn't matter, I'm just curious, we could just make a motion to. Delete all of those in one vote, or do we need to vote?
No, I think we can do that in one deal. My only question, and it's, and it's very perfunctory kind of a procedural thing is. You know, all of these are lumped together in board docs. Rules are a little bit separate, is that right, or will it be sort of like a policy and it says CK?
Uh, Mr. Chair, so it looks exactly like a policy, it just says CK and then it has rule in parentheses. It's anywhere docs, just like a policy.
Okay. Okay, is there any other discussion on that? Alright. Wanted to have a discussion about human resources, we have not had a human resource officer within the district. And I think if my, I just wanted to have a discussion, I. Human resources, if it would be worth bringing that as, in as an administrative position. I asked Mr. Harris and Mr. Sweeney to put together a, uh, sort of a proposal as to how we could. Do that and fund that position, so what that would look like, so I think you wanted to move forward.
Sure, Mr. Chair, members of the board, so this would be a dedicated HR professional. Someone with specialized training and experience in hiring, onboarding, training, benefits, internal investigations, like. Complaints, Title Nine, Title Seven, that sort of thing. Uh, hopefully to help streamline the process of Fremont One. That more we had those functions kind of spread out across, I think, uh, four different people in the central office. I surveyed superintendents to see how many other districts in the state have an HR director or a manager. And we got responses from twenty-six districts. Of those twenty-six, sixteen said they have a position in their district that does this. Um, and arranged from very small districts to the largest in the state. One district that's about our size outsources its HR functions to a third party in a different town entirely. I thought it was interesting, I was not expecting to hear that. Um, so that leaves ten districts that responded don't have this position, the largest of those districts is Lincoln Two, which is Star Valley. Uh, but mostly the smaller districts don't have a position of those that responded at least. Um, Travis is reaching out through Wespo to other business managers to see what those, what those business managers have to share. Some districts combine HR functions with other positions, so they may have an HR manager who does HR and a small piece. In addition, like a federal grants manager. One district ties in with the business manager, which is not what I would recommend in Fremont One, we've got enough on Travis's plate. Uh, I asked for job descriptions, I got a couple, I don't have nearly anything yet to, I don't have enough information yet to really know. What I would put out as a proposal, but I'm gathering more and more information, I had a good conversation with Tori, the superintendent. They recently went to an HR director position. Um, he had some great feedback on how that's been working, uh, for the benefit of their employees and their community, so. Uh, I'll, I'll get more information, I just wanted to share what I have preliminarily. And then see if there's any other questions that you all have that I can answer for you in the meantime.
Uh, Mr. Harris, so you said there, these responsibilities are spread over four people currently?
I, I, I think it's, it's about four, so myself, Mr. Sweeney, Jenny Johnson. Uh, Lisa Fouts, payroll and benefits, those are probably the primary. And Deidre, Deidre does a lot of the Title Nine, Title Seven, she's kind of our, our officer in those, those areas, so I guess it would be five. Yeah.
And, and would you anticipate that we would? That it would be worth the expenditure to consolidate that into one, to one person? Is this, is this gonna be worth the money rather than other ways that we could spend it?
Depending on what the cost is, I, I, I'm not really, Mr. Mr. Chair, Mr. Jensen, I'm not really sure exactly what other districts are paying an HR. Manager or director, I'm guessing it's a significant amount, it's, it's a pretty specialized position. So we would just have to look at that and see what the cost benefit would be. I think that for the people who are doing some of the HR stuff, it's not too much of an imposition. Probably now, because they're, they're used to it, that's been part of the job description, but it could improve, um. You know, one of the areas I look at is onboarding and training, we have a lot of training that's going on at the school level, some through the central office. Um, but it's, it's, it could maybe be gathered together and made more uniform. Um, particularly in some areas around policy and things like that. But that's a concern I have, and then the other concern would be like with internal investigations, if we get a grievance or a complaint. Those things can, if you're an administrator, are taking all the time to look into that. If we had someone who could do that work and that's their, their dedicated role, that might alleviate a lot of the pressure off, off administrators to. Do those investigations at a high level and high quality without sacrificing every component of their job.
And I think just in principle, I think I'm, I'm not sure I would support, um, adding an additional position, uh, given. Uh, declining enrollments and some vegetarian uncertainty for the future, but, but maybe, I guess.
Um, I have one question, which was the third party, the school that had a third party in a different town, was that still a district employee or were they hiring? Like someone at an HR firm, it's comp, yeah.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Gans, that was a, a completely non-school district, um, entity, another external company. Based in a nearby city, that's a larger city that has an HR company with services for hire.
Do you know much about that price, is it comparable to hiring a full-time person or?
I, Mr. Chair and Ms. Gans, I don't know yet, I just got that information today, um, and I'll, I'll do a little research into that firm. Find out exactly what they charge on what services.
Thank you.
According to Sirius XM, seventy-two dollars a month. I just get that all the time, whatever reason. Uh, you know, I, I appreciate, I definitely appreciate Scott's comments and where he's coming from, but I do worry a little bit about the. The financial impact, um, my, my concern, I think, is that we've got some. Very professional, high-paid folks in the administration area. And I worry that they're doing a lot of, that they're, they're taking time away from what they need to be doing. Um, and spending that time on issues that I think would be better, um. Someone would be more professional at, and it's not, I'm not, that's not a negative thing, uh, it's just a specialized thing. Uh, where someone could focus on those items and, and allow our current professionals to do things. Some of these items, I, I also worry a little bit about the. The consistency over time of our HR practices, because they do get handed off, uh. Here and there, uh, where I think if we have one person, I think it'd be really nice to be able to have consistent, you know, consistent ways. We advertise with positions, consistent ways to research people, look into their positions, set up interviews. Do the hiring, onboarding, all those kinds of things, I think would be really nice and awesome. So that's, those are some of the reasons why I want a district to.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I support everything you say and. As an employer of our size, I think it is also somewhat our professional responsibility, and we have a great team doing that by splitting that work up, but I think. It is a more professional look to have one person who can handle all of that and then to not muddle some of the. Especially when there is a within the district concern, not muddle those positions with. Other job responsibilities here, and so I would advocate for, if we can find a way to create money for it. An HR person, or I'm curious what we learned about a third-party option.
Um, just to add to that, like, just employees looking for innovation too, if there's four different people that handle different. And how, are they emailing those people, how long does it take them to get that answer? And that, you know, time saved for them as well.
Mr. Jim, did I hear somebody say that we're using to, um, to hire and run interviews?
Set them up.
Set them up.
Yeah, the, the administrative side, not, not the.
Just somebody still have our building principals in charge of the.
Yeah, no, I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect change here. But this person could do the, the footwork that currently are either administrators or the, the principals are having to do.
Calling applicants and setting up.
Yes, yeah. Okay, so what I'm hearing initially is that we're okay as a group to have Mike and Travis continue to. To look down this road and at least bring us a proposal?
Yes.
Okay, climate survey. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, um, so this is an updated draft that's linked into the agenda here, based on the feedback that I received from you all in July and then also. Uh, discussing with the admin team at our first meeting of the year back at the end of July. We shortened up the survey a little bit, we retained the demographic info, but into each of the categories, we have more than three items. And then kept the open-ended comment, if you know, in case there is anything else that isn't covered above that employees want to share with us. So about twenty-five items, it's much shorter and I think still gets at the most, most of the meat that you all have. Requested and that our administrators thought would be important for them to know as well.
Are we still in terms of the timeframe, or we're still looking at the, I think October is what we said?
The chair, yeah, that was the, the discussion last month was to have the first administration of the survey be in October on our professional development day at the end of the month. Um, and keeping the window open during this period of time on that date, so that people can respond anonymously, but not, you know. Unscrupulous person would not be able to submit multiple responses. Um, so that's, that was the idea for the October, and then I think we were still open air as far as the second semester and going to do that.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I think, uh, I, I like this draft, uh, Mike, I think this is, uh, this is excellent. I'd, I'd like to see this happen in October and then in the spring again.
I have one question and one suggestion, um, a question, Mr. Chair and Superintendent Harris. Who is reading and reviewing these, does that fall upon you, Mr. Harris?
Mr. Chair, Ms. Gans, I think what the board's indication was last month was to have WSB administer this survey the first time around. To ensure that all of our employees know that it's truly not the school district, it's not me, it's not your principal. It's not the school board, but we can get results back and be able to take action based on those results. But I think that was the indication, if I'm not mistaken.
With the hope, long-term, we might be able to eliminate that expense and just move to, is probably the board chair, I think. That's how Brett used to do it, that's why I did the first time when I was a, a chair, seemed to work pretty well. But I do like the idea of maybe having the first one, WSB.
That sounds great to me, and I would just advocate for making sure it's clearly communicated to staff who they're going to, because I think that will. Dictate, unfortunately, I think that will dictate how people respond. And then I had one minor suggestion, I want to say thank you so much, I know a lot of work has gone into this, um. But for the open-ended short response. I'm curious if there could be lately more, or a couple slightly more pointed questions, um. And my suggestion would be something like, question that says. Some of the best parts of working at Fremont One are, fill in the blank. And then, question two, a way that Fremont One could be, or could improve is, fill in the blank. And then in other comments, I'm just trying to prompt people, when I see other comments. It's kind of a boring prompt, but when I see something along the lines of what do we do well and what can we improve on, I think that would. Help pull out strengths and weaknesses better and also encourage people to give constructive feedbacks, but also encourage them to highlight. The things we really do well, so it doesn't just become a complaint section either.
Any issues with that? Sounds like a good suggestion.
I would just say with that makes me think of the, um. I forget what that was, survey, you've used it, but Dr. Barker did too, where you take those words that show up and tho- those words are. What is that called? Yeah, I mean, that could, I guess, kind of help to, you know, use that for those two open-ended, to see a word cloud for the strengths and weaknesses. Um, that maybe we pick up on patterns too, so. Maybe having those two more directed and then the other as well would be helpful.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Gans, if you could, you had three questions, I think that you referred to open-ended, one was, some of the best parts of working at Fremont One are blank. Some, some ways S, SSD One could be better are, and then what was the third one?
Just in other comments, exactly as it's listed now.
Thank you.
Yeah. And maybe you don't even need that third one.
Alright, other, other comments on this topic? Make sure you work on this, Mike. Okay, uh, WSB awards, WSB A awards. Uh, the Golden Bell Champion of Education and Outstanding Service Award, those are. Three awards that WSB gives each year, we've been fortunate, I think, as a district and proactive as a district to nominate people for these awards. I don't know when they're, do you guys know where to do this year?
This, Mr. Chair, and Mr. Jensen may have the exact date, but I think last year and the year before, we approached on these September, their applications were due in October. So that awards can be presented at the WSB State Conference in November.
Okay. So I would suggest that we have by next meeting. Come with your lists for each one of these, go, WSB has a section out there about each one of those awards. Represents, so if you can look at the appropriate category for people that you're nominating. Outstanding Service Award is a new one, as I understand, is that right? Mike?
Mr. Chair, yes, and I, I looked in WSB's materials in their monthly, or their weekly memos, and I haven't seen anything about this yet. But I know that it is something that they're gonna be talking about, probably to round up, that's another, another award that district boards can, can option post.
I know Eileen already has.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Scott.
And that, that, that third award, that's, uh, designed for somebody that fills the role of, of board secretary.
Okay.
Sort of has a generic title, but that, who, because different districts have a, you know, different, uh, person filling that role, so. Um, you know, the role that Carol filled or Jenny's filling now, um, that's, that's the type of person that that award is for.
Well, I think we can probably get out of the gates early and say, I'd sure like to put Carol up for that award.
Great. Great.
I know Eileen has another person, not with that award for one of the others, unfortunately, I have neglected to uh. Recall who that is, but we'll talk about. We'll talk about specific ones that actually. So bring those names. Anything else, Mike? Mr. Chair, no, okay. Anything else on, on that, you guys? Hearing none, upcoming events or reminders, August twenty-sixth. Is. Bring it, what was it? First day of school, I'm sure everyone's excited. It is, this is all cut off and so I can't really. Uh, W S A Fall Regional Meeting, six P M, August twenty-seventh. Uh, I don't know, is everyone going to that, anyone want, I'll go.
I'm going, I don't know, I need, I need to let Jenny know, I forgot.
Okay, round up, the use, all round up, August twenty-seventh. It's in the evening at six P M, okay? Please let Jenny know if you're interested in going. Uh, she needs to get us registered and and I don't know if there's a payment or not, and so she needs to take care of it. Then September sixteenth is our regular schoolwork day. With that, we are adjourned, thanks, everybody.